Okay. Good evening and welcome to the April tenth, two thousand and twenty five, meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so after two lengthy days and nights of interim superintendent candidate tours and interviews, we're here this evening to deliberate, discuss, and potentially vote on entering into contract negotiations with a candidate to be our interim superintendent. Before we get into the deliberations, I do have a list here of thank yous that I want to go through very quickly just because we would not have gotten to this place without an incredible amount of time and work and dedication and effort from quite a few folks. So the list is in admittedly no particular order with the exception that the first mention is intentional because I want to thank Andrea Stern Armstrong, our human resources director, who just did such an incredible amount of work, both with the screening committee and on her own, to put schedules together, to put tours together, to coordinate conference rooms. I mean, lots of folks put in lots of time and effort on this and she, in the midst of doing an assistant superintendent of finance search and a director of student support services search. So Andrea, I hope she's watching at home because she said she might, but huge thanks and appreciation to her for all of the effort on that and to the screening committee as a whole. Because the the search was, you know, sort of in executive session and not public, I'm not going to name the folks publicly, but in a real short time, they went through a ton of work and resumes and interviews to get us a panelist of finalists. So thank you to the screening committee, to Dr. Bryson and Mr. Turner, our representatives to the screening committee, Jen, for co-chairing that effort. Thank you guys for taking on that that extra work for us. To the staff, the teachers, the building leaders, everybody in the buildings for making the candidates feel welcome, for taking time to show them around, to let them into your classrooms and interact with the kids. It's just the whole thing is a really, really great opportunity. And for those of us who got to be sort of chaperones and to get into the buildings that we don't always get into, it's a really, it's a really good process and it really gives the the building folks a chance to interact with the superintendent sort of on their terms, which we appreciate. The central office team, Paul's here tonight, everybody in the central office, I know you guys also went out of your way to make these candidates feel welcome and engaged and to answer any questions they had. And as they'll be the ones that, you know, work with the superintendent closely, we appreciate the the effort. I want to give a special shout out to Ken Lord, our information technology director, for recording and then sending out the links to the interviews late last night with the surveys so that we could get all the surveys back in time for this meeting. To the folks in the community who came to the panels, who watched the interviews, who filled out the surveys. Appreciate the feedback to the candidates, certainly for applying and making themselves available to us and to you guys in the room. It's been, it's been a long couple of weeks, but it is, you know, it is one of, if not the most important things that we do as a committee is hiring or supervising a superintendent. And so it's a really important process and I appreciate everybody's time on this and attention to this and dedication to it. So thank you. Did I miss anybody? I think I got everyone. All right. So again, we said it the other night at the outset of the interviews, but, you know, we had three qualified, capable candidates and now we need to, I think, select who we think is the best fit for Wilmington right now. So then the question becomes, how do we proceed from here? My thought, and open to discussion because I've certainly never done this before either, is that we take turns. We go around, we can sort of talk about our impressions, what we thought, things that we learned about the candidates that we liked. If you feel comfortable at that moment, make a recommendation, not a motion, a recommendation. If you'd like to hear what your colleagues have to say and possibly some folks will show up for public comment, we certainly don't have to make recommendations, but I do think it's important that everybody gets a chance to sort of talk about what they thought, what they learned, how they feel. So unless anybody feels strongly to the contrary, I think that's... Okay? Now, does anybody want to start?
I'll start.
Mr. Golden, you can be first.
So yeah, I want to, first of all, you're right, all the thanks was was great. That's the nerves of this meeting. I would not have remembered that. So kudos to you, Mr. Chairperson. You know, we did have three really talented candidates, really, really qualified people. I went on a tour with one and obviously sat here for all three interviews and I think each would bring a really different set of strengths to the district. I want to thank them for having gone through this and all the candidates who came before the search committee, screening committee. You know, I'm going to break it down by kind of theme. So MSBA, that's obviously so critical. That's really front and center for us. I thought all of them had really some strong advantages. I thought Ms. Benenda, her kind of experience and relationships of having worked on schools in Worcester and kind of knowing the playing field for MSBA was a point to her credit, absolutely. I think that that's something we can't, you can't really look past to some degree. I thought Mr. Fulgoni, you know, I'm from Haverhill and I know the Honking School was a project that that did go really well, to my knowledge, and I think his kind of presentation skills would be an asset to that project. And then Mr. Thompson, I also thought, you know, I really liked, it really stood out to me, his kind of bringing a project from start to finish and his idea of having people come in and tour the buildings. I thought that that is, I think, something that observes really keenly where we're at in this process. You know, in terms of in the classroom, I thought, again, they all had things to be said for them. I thought Ms. Benenda, her special education experience, her experience as a principal and in the classroom, her passion for the kids came through. I took her on the tour, so I was there for a chunk with her and that really came through. She was very kind to all the staff and faculty. Mr. Fulgoni, you know, he had plenty of stories to tell about about his kind of experience in the schools and that was, you know, borne out through my reference work. And then, and then Mr. Thompson, you know, he has, he was awarded for his work as a middle school principal and we know how critical it is that we keep up the good work that's going on in the middle school after the AMLE work that we did. So yeah, I, those are the kind of main factors, the lenses through which I've been looking. Just to revisit my notes here as well, you know, I think what has kind of become clear to me in term, was the deciding factor for me was, or has been so far, and I'm open to hearing from my colleagues, the working relationship with school committees. I thought that of those candidates, certainly all of them are very familiar with school committees, but Mr. Dr. Thompson, Dr. Thompson, titles, I apologize, had the best answer, I think, in working with school committees. I think the way in which he described conveying information to the school committee, keeping the school committee in the loop is a great two-way channel of communication that felt familiar to my limited time with Dr. Brand. And I think, you know, that's such a key part of what we're going to do with the superintendent. So, you know, right now, my recommendation would be Dr. Thompson. But I am very open to hearing from my esteemed colleagues who have my great respect.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Appreciate that feedback. Your call, Lee.
Are we allowed to ask questions to our fellow committee members?
I can't see no reason to say no to that, absolutely.
So one, one thing I wanted to hear some feedback from all of you on was, we're, we're in the middle of the MSBA program. All three of these candidates have MSBA experience, right? What, for maybe those that were sitting on the committee, what role do we think we need the superintendent to play in this interim in one year for the MSBA, you know, because we're kind of, we're in the program. You need to get the vote, but is there anything else that this person needs to really, we really need this person to do for us?
I would say yes, certainly anybody that's on the committee, happy to hear your thoughts. I think knowing that Dr. Brand was the chair of that committee and that the chair is now going to be our assistant town manager and so that, knowing that that responsibility is removed, the focus probably changes, but certainly happy to listen to the committee. But I stole your answer, Mr. Golden, apologies.
No, it's okay. No, it's, I was just going to basically say the same thing that, you know, in my opinion, because Judy O'Connell was tremendously capable, is now going to be chairing the school building committee, the role is more public facing, it's more conveying the story and sharing the message of what the school is about to the public and not the relation, the day-to-day with the OPM and the architect and the CM at risk. It's much more now getting the school community to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, where we've been. So I think, you know, each of them has done that, has communicated a message of a school to the public, but I think that Dr. Thompson, the well-roundedness of his overall profile and then the specifics of kind of bringing people into the schools is a match in my estimation.
Mr. Ragsdale, Mr. Turner, if you have any...
I would just add that as far as the role goes, I think it's more of a coordinating role at this point because the school building committee really is, you know, in the driver's seat. We also have, you know, designer and a CM at risk firm that have both experience and their own resources in terms of like helping getting us to that yes vote. We have the outreach committees and so forth on the building committee. And the, the district now is more of in a supporting role of kind of what does the committee need in terms of resources? Like what information can the district provide rather than having to actually drive it? And of course, the new superintendent will sit on the building committee but not be chairing it. And, and so they'll, they'll still be, you know, deeply involved in the, you know, in the leadership and the internal work. But again, I think of it as more of a kind of a coordinating and supporting, providing resources and information role at this point.
I would, I would highlight two things. One, to those points, I completely agree, but there is an element of being the public face up to the vote. And then with the ideal scenario of us successfully passing those two votes, the next step in between then and when they would be completing the term would be as a member of the leadership team, they're no longer the chair, but the leadership team of the project to maintain the focus on the educational program as we're going through the review cycles and as the following process passed the vote of, you know, the design. The phrase they've used is that we're at twelve percent completion with design, at the point where we are in schematic design. And so there's a lot of design work to go and that role will have an important function in between September and June ideally to help maintain the focus on the educational program and the educational values that we see in it. So I do see two different sorts of roles and certainly being able to connect with the community as a public face is really important between now and September. Then it's defending the educational choices and the educational purpose of the building and highlighting the educational needs through the ongoing process of the next steps ideally that we get to. So two, those two different pieces.
Thank you. Can I answer your question?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you for being willing to go first.
Always.
Do we want to go around? Do we want to go around? Who wants to go next?
I'd be happy to go.
All right, Mr. Turner, you're up.
I'm going to write my own notes later, so I'm, but I, I think I'm organized enough that I can do this. We'll, we'll see if I can do it. Contrary to my colleague, Mr. Golden, I'm going to go in just candidate by candidate as opposed to themes, which I probably is a better idea. I like your approach on that. So starting with Mr. Fulgoni, clearly has had a lot of different experience, a lot of experience on building projects and some very interesting thoughts on change philosophy and how you, how you want to pursue change in the district. Clearly, some strong conversations about community outreach and his thoughts on how that could be accomplished. I also do like, and I, I hope we can take some notes from all these good candidates, and sorry, I should have mentioned this. These are, I was really, really pleased to see that we were able to find three candidates that all have experience in a lot of different roles across education. An interim role is a, is a unique sort of position and to be able to have candidates that were this strong was, 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 was a pleasant surprise. I do think taking a note from him on special education, he had some good ideas about the way we approach it. And I'm not saying we don't, but we can kind of push further on to Mr. Ragsdale's points. And one of the question and answer pieces, the whole child view of all of the children in special education, you do start from the 504 and the IEP and what are we trying to help the child with? But I appreciated the way he talked about that process and what we might be able to do as a more of a whole child sort of endeavor with, with 504 and IEP. And then as part of my, my, part of this process, I did do the parent reference checks and then, and then one other person on another candidate and, and the parent reference checks were certainly positive for Mr. Fulgoni. In terms of Ms. Benenda, clearly a wealth of experience, a really amazingly diverse and long career. Certainly, her work on MSBA projects is really well noted. It is different, and partly due to your question, to do an MSBA project in a city than a town. Just noted, but she also did successfully work with those. One of the references I did speak to was Mr. Fontaine, who she had as a reference and get to my notes there on that. He highlighted that she really does know the MSBA project. She was very involved in the details of the projects and could work very well on that.
Before you go too much further.
I just had a follow-up on something you just said. What is the key difference between an MSBA in a city versus a town?
The vote.
And what is the vote?
The vote is the city council.
So we don't have the whole community voting in the city, but we just have a city council? I think that would just might be important for everyone.
Thank you for the clarifying question. I appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing that up. And I didn't mean to interrupt, but I thought that's where you were going and that was, so, okay.
No, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then the last thing about, about Mr. Fontaine is, is he did find her a good partner to work through in the process and that she was looking out for the educational needs and, and doing the right things, but also the right level of detail and that sort of stuff. So that was a good reference for her as well. She certainly has experience as an interim and, and knows what that process looks like. And certainly also her as well had extensive experience in special education is something that any district can always learn from. And so I was, I was happy to hear about all that. And then the last, the last piece I'll mention about her is that she, that's the last piece. I liked her approach with unions and part of the, the concept of anchor meetings where regardless of whether something is in crisis, you go and meet with them every month to maintain the relationships and try and head off things ahead of crisis. So that sort of a process seemed to be a really good way to be consistently in contact. And I actually think it's, I don't know that Dr. Brand has followed this exact approach, but I believe Dr. Brand has built a very good relationship and I think this will, this will pass through with some other candidates as well. And that continuing that relationship that we do have now with our, with our, with our unions is really important. And I, and the way she phrased that and the way she engaged with that was, was certainly very good to hear. And then Dr. Thompson. He certainly has had a good long run, oddly enough, same number of years as, as Dr. Brand here. So I can appreciate the length of time he served in Norwood. I was particularly impressed with not just getting an MSBA vote passed and in their particular case, they're, they're a representative town government, a town meeting instead of full town meeting, but it's still a room full of three hundred and I think something like thirty people and only two voted no to the building. They also got an override passed. And as we know from some of our very near neighbors, getting an override passed is hugely difficult. And so I think those two things together speak really highly to the ability to make a, a connection with the community and present them with the important needs of the community and get successful votes. So on, on, not just MSBA, but in some ways, the override is more impressive to me. Obviously, they're, they're very different types of endeavors, but one of the things that also impressed me was when he was talking about his middle school work and some of the special education programs he had at one of his middle schools, the fact that the program sustained after he left. That type of thing really speaks well and particularly in an interim where you may only be here this one year. Likely, I mean, by default, only the one year, having an impact, having a positive impact that can last into the start of the permanent superintendency is, is a really impressive sort of thing. I did like that in, in, I believe, both districts, but certainly in Mashpee, the interim student advisory council, excuse me, superintendent advisory council and directly connecting with students at the high school and middle school level was really, I think, a very good idea. I actually think it would be, I know we have building level with our principals, advisory council committees from their students, but I think having that sort of thing as superintendent would be an interesting approach and I think could be very helpful to us. He, also Dr. Thompson, talked about his, his interactions with union leadership and, you know, the, the, it starts from day one. It seemed like the right sort of way to, to think about those things. And I was impressed with the Mash, the Mashpee case that he did mention where the past challenges did not dictate what happened. They did have good negotiations. They did get it done, even though in the past it had been difficult. I think his, his approach to budget seems to be completely appropriate at a superintendent level, talking about five-year projections to give the town the comfort. I know we've had fantastic, fantastic relationships with our town on the budget side. But that will evolve and having, having somebody who has had some interesting and good thoughts about how we can work with the town on our budget is, is useful as well. And then just a couple of last things. I did talk to parent references for him as well and they were positive as well. One of the parents that I spoke to there happens to also be a director of finance in an eastern Massachusetts district and so could speak not just as a parent from his time as a principal, but also has continued to interact with him at the conferences and meetings and other events of, of, of district leadership and with, is still impressed with the way he's, he's done his work since he left, since she, her, her child left his school and since he left that school and moved on to different roles. So very good, good reference. I do think, one other thing I did, seemed like a good use of time at, at the time. I went and watched school committee meetings from Mashpee, from East Hampton, from Amesbury. Oddly enough, our friends in Maine don't record theirs. The, the Amesbury ones were long enough ago and during COVID. And as some of you know far better than I, school committee meetings during COVID were a completely different thing. So I'm going to not speak to those ones specifically, but when I looked at the others, the East Hamp, excuse me, the Mashpee school committee meetings were the most similar to ours. And the way they flowed and the way the superintendent interacted with the committee. So just as a, as a high level to kind of follow on to Mr. Golden's point, it seemed like that was a good working relationship as well. So I, at the end, if I'm going to come to that sort of a conclusion, I do think from our interactions, the resume, the reference calls, and then when I read the, the survey results, I do think that, that Dr. Thompson is the best fit. It was interesting to me when we looked at the survey, some of the, the, the most positive comments were from the, the district leadership level, broadly district leadership level for Mr., for Dr. Thompson. And so that gave me a lot of comfort, specifically some of the comments about how he interacted in the buildings as being different and much more connected to the people in the buildings were really impressive. So I, I take all those things. I'm certainly open and would like to hear from the other colleagues on the committee because, because you guys have perspectives that I, I always find really important to hear from. So, thank you.
Mr. Turner. Anybody want to go or am I just going to start calling on people?
Just like a classroom.
Just like a classroom, yeah. All right, let's stay on the side of the table, Mike. Why don't you go and then we'll just work our way around.
Sure. I guess I put me on the spot here. Yeah, so I'll, I'll speak a little bit more short, I guess. All three candidates I thought were...
Even Paul appreciated that.
All three candidates definitely have great experience and all three of them can certainly do the job here. I, I, I think I'd be surprised if anyone feels differently and that's the way I felt coming away from it, which is a great position for us to be in, right? We can be choosy, we can be selective and kind of find person that's the right to fit, right? Not feeling like, oh, man, like no one really has the right experience that we need. You know, I, I feel that some people answer the questions in the interviews, you know, better and more on point than others and everything. And then that's kind of what I look for for someone that's in a leadership position is can you have a succinct answer? Can you get to the point? Can you boil down these really complex ideas into like a short kind of sentence and everything like that? So that's something I was just kind of listening for because all three of them really, they have the track record, they have the stories, they have the experience and everything. So they've all done the work. They all know how to do it well. Interestingly enough, I would love if we can like mishmash a couple of them together. You know, there were some things that I thought Mr. Fulgoni said that were really interesting, you know, around culture and then his ideas on special ed are things I've read that are maybe a little fringe, but, you know, gaining a little more traction about, you know, trying to be more, what, what did he say? Like strengths-based, you know, because outcomes really haven't been great over decades for special ed students, right? Ms. Benenda, you know, her strength is, to me, operations. Like she's someone that was in Worcester for a while. She can just get it done. If you need to get something done, she'll execute, she'll get it done well, right? You know, Mr. Thompson, he seemed just all around. I think maybe someone that had a little bit of everything that we want. He kind of had more of that operation experience, someone that really kind of was able to get a lot of things done in the school, you know, especially in the middle school, which I like to joke that he's going to heaven, you know, because it's a tough age, right? And, you know, that's honestly one of the schools that we're working on improving a lot right now, right? And we have a great new principal here and I think giving that new principal some support could be a value add for us, right? Big on my mind is MSBA. That's why I asked the question. So that's where, you know, I think thinking around all three candidates, like what in their experience they could offer us right now? And I kind of defer to what Mr. Turner said with Mr. Thompson, that I found it impressive he was able to pass an override. We are not asking anyone for an override, to be clear. To be very clear. But it just shows that he obviously was doing something right in the community to get the community on board with this because it is such a big ask, you know, and we are going to be asking the community for a very big ask within the school, right? So there's something I think we can kind of learn from him with that. You know, I was actually really torn with this, but, you know, my recommendation, I think, would be probably Dr. Thompson as well. I felt he was the more well-rounded of all of them and that what maybe we are looking for in the better fit potentially. But it's not to say any of the other candidates had anything, I would say, wrong with them. I think they all had really great strengths and honestly, I think we can learn a lot from the other two candidates too.
Thank you.
It's my turn.
Do you want to go now?
Well, I feel like they're going to call on me anyway, so, you know.
I was going to make my way this way.
Were you really?
I was.
All right, go ahead.
Wow. Mr. Ragsdale?
Really? Professional treatment and the chairship.
I am keeping you guys on your toes tonight. All right, if you want to go.
I'll go, I'll go. Just go, she's going, my turn. Okay. So, so thank you, everybody. And I, again, I'll do, I won't do the whole thank you thing that Jesse did, but as a part of this from sort of the, the get-go and sort of the, the driver of, we're going to do this and we're going to get it done now. And I can't, I wish I could, well, I'm going to tell the community how incredible this, this committee is for, for adding all of these meetings at the, I mean, really what felt like last minute in a lot of ways for us and just sort of like being there to do these, these tours and taking days off from work to, to tour people through schools. And I just don't think that Wilmington always recognizes sort of the, the behind-the-scenes work that all of you do and getting to sit here and watch just the incredible sacrifices you make to ensure that we have someone leading us is just a real, it's just your gems and it's a treasure to, and it's such a joy to work with you. So thank you for that. And of course, to, to everyone else, so I'm just going to say a quick thank you to the screening committee, NESDEC, Andrea, I mean, seriously.
I think I forgot NESDEC.
You forgot, oh, good. I'm glad I mentioned it. She really did lead the search so thoroughly and efficiently and NESDEC was incredibly helpful with sort of the, their strategic way of organizing and the materials they gave us and the questions they recommended. So it was really helpful to have them kind of helping us behind the scenes. I'm confident that we had three qualified final candidates, as everyone has stated, who all demonstrated strength in the areas that we highlighted in the job description, right? So in that description, we highlighted communication, educational leadership, financial and facilities management. Some of our school committee priorities that we discussed that people either sent to me or that came up in one of our meetings included experience with MSBA, obviously, strategic planning, special education, middle school education, negotiations, hiring and retention of high-quality staff. I was able to spend additional time with each of the candidates on a few school tours. I made it to all eight schools, some of them twice, not all of them twice, but some of them twice. And again, thank you to our building principals for showcasing their buildings and more importantly, the learning and joy that was happening inside all those classrooms. It was really a... It was really a, it was a joy to spend the day wandering through our buildings and to see the, the curriculum that we have approved and to see kids doing this work. It was really exciting. But to hear the principals talk about their schools and to talk about what's happening in those buildings was also really a, a gift for that, for those couple of days. Now I've had some time to process the interviews, although it does feel like it's very crunched, but the small group discussions and I've read all the community feedback and thank you to all who completed those surveys. Those, that was an incredible turnaround time and we got a, a lot of surveys completed. So thank you Wilmington for, and people, many of them said they, they watched all of those interviews. So they watched all those interviews at nine o'clock last night or this morning and then completed the survey to help guide us. So it is really just what a incredible thank you to, to them. And I'm going to share a few takeaways and my final recommendation for the interim. First, Jared Folgony, 35 years in education, as you've mentioned, spoke about his experience, five MSBA projects. He talked about how he leads by listening and understanding the needs of his staff and the role of relationships built on mutual respect. I thought the three of them had that in common. They really talked a lot about respect and talking with one another, sort of this two-way communication. I especially appreciated his discussion on special education, as my colleagues have already mentioned, and his work to build IEPs around assets and student strengths. And he provided really strong examples of how he approached this work in his district. Next, Maureen Benenda was impressive with almost 50 years in education. To look at that resume was really something. What an incredible career. Having served in all roles from classroom experience to principal and finally superintendent. She too, a deep experience with MSBA, strategic planning, budget and negotiations. She spoke about the role of relationships, kindness, trust, mutual respect when describing her leadership style. I also appreciated her in-depth discussion of AP courses to drive excellence. I thought that was a really interesting takeaway from that interview and how her district increased access, but also support for students in AP courses. And I thought that was something that I would really love to spend a little bit more time digging into. Finally, Dr. David Thompson, a former middle school teacher, as Mr. McCauley has mentioned, and I think a few of us have kind of noted that, has served as a principal, an assistant superintendent, superintendent Norwood for seven years and most recently as the interim in Mashpee, demonstrated deep knowledge of middle school education, MSBA leadership. I too made note of his override success. Strong communication that was authentic, proactive, responsive and built on trust and respect. He discussed his experience with high-quality instructional materials. He talked about MTSS. He talked about his focus on curriculum. I appreciated his approach to listening and empowering teachers, principals and students to engage in processes relevant to their schools and learning and his focus on two-way communication really stood out to me. The references and survey data also supported this communication style. I appreciated his discussion of strategic planning and stakeholder feedback as it related to the budget. I also did all the reference calls for, I mean, I did all the ref, I did reference calls. I also did that, no, I did reference calls for all three candidates. I spoke to people who were either principals who worked for our candidates or town managers. And all of the references basically reiterated kind of some of what I've already said, but I was really impressed with Dr. Thompson's references, especially from some former principals that I talked to, who, so I had worked directly with him and sort of said, like, he really sort of retains and mentors strong faculty and is then able, and talked about how although he has now moved on from Norwood, the people that he's hired are there and really, really incredibly successful. And I thought that that was an exciting, sort of like a little add-on to something that you might not have seen here in the interviews. And so my final recommendation is for Dr. David Thompson.
Thank you, Dr. Bryson.
Thank you.
Gentlemen. Mr. Ragsdale? All right.
All right. I think that we have here three incredibly impressive with, you know, a long list of accomplishments and qualities that, that would serve, that would serve Wilmington well. All of them have experience also as interim candidates, which is a particular type of role. They all have very deep MSBA experience, which we've obviously talked about several times is important to us, experience with working with unions and bargainings and we're driving school improvement. So I think that we were very well-served by getting, getting these candidates in front of us and that Wilmington could be ably, ably led by any of them. I do want to also mention a few things in particular about each candidate. With Mr. Folgony, I want to highlight just a few of the things that I thought were just particularly notable. His idea of just like the leadership as a service model, of just like always being thinking about just like that you were there ultimately to serve children, but then also to serve your staff and serve your community. And you know, how do you do that, you know, and how do you find out what the needs of the community and your staff and employees are and how do you give that to them? I thought that he had a wise focus on the idea of incremental change, that you can't just go in and just start throwing things around, that you know, you need to be very smart and focused on working in reasonable pieces. Some of the work that he talked about from his time at Triton Middle School, including creating a culture of risk-taking so that teachers feel empowered to take positive risks, I think was, was, was very valuable. And, and I will, we'll also just echo and co-sign what many people have said about the special education approach, which I noted at the time and that was again, an idea that kind of stuck, stuck in my head a lot. For Dr. Thompson, again, lots of excellent, excellent experience, a few things that I really took from, from his interview and just from conversations with him is that this idea that one of the things he mentioned during his, his interview is that culture beats strategy. And this idea that obviously you do need good strategies, you need both, but as far as what is really, what really drives, you know, improvement and change and kids feeling welcome is the culture of the schools that they're in even more so than the particular strategies and techniques that you employ. And I think that that was, that was very, very insightful. The way that he also discussed some of the budgeting, that you have to align the budget to the strategic plan and that the collaborative budgeting process that he described, building trusts with your unions, again, not, not just one day, but like all the time, that developing these types of relationships is the, is the key to ultimately being successful for them. One thing that also I took from, especially a lot of the feedback from the visits, I was not able to attend the tours and go with the candidates. One thing that came out through the, through the feedback that, that I read was that he really engaged with the teachers and the students while touring the buildings. That that was just like noted multiple times in some of the feedback, that as he was going along and just, you know, learning and, and being escorted, that he was really engaging with just kind of like introducing himself and talking with the teachers and the kids as he, as he went through. Ms. Benenda has had an extraordinary career in education and just running a 25,000-student district is no mean feat. It's a totally different animal than, than a lot of other things, you know? All superintendent positions are not the same. Despite that, I got a very clear sense that even though she, for so many, you know, for multiple years was running an enormous district, that she was absolutely still connected to teachers and to students and to what was going on in those buildings. And again, it's like in, you know, Worcester has, you know, over, I think, 50 schools. There's a lot of buildings, but it's not just something that you sort of get to be a hands-off to sort of manager, like moving the pieces around and just delegating everything so you can only see the big picture, that even when running an enormous district, that she was absolutely down in the details in the schools and still talking to kids and teachers. And just the, I think the, you know, the, the passion for, for, for teaching and learning and for kids feeling welcome in school, I think it just absolutely shines through in, in everything that, everything that she says. And again, impressive work with building projects and with union negotiations and many, many things. So where I finally come down on this is that I think, and this is based again on, you know, both their interviews, looking at the larger, the larger picture of their experience and the references that were checked and the feedback that we received from many, many members of the community. And again, I have to say thank you so much to the people who gave feedback for us, is that I think that Dr. Thompson is the best fit for Wilmington. I think that the districts that he's worked in are the closest in likeness to Wilmington. I think that the experience that he's had, especially at the middle school level, again, is really something that would be an advantage to us to have in our district. And I think he would be my, at this point, preferred choice.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale.
Smaha. Okay. So this is a, this is a really difficult decision. I, I think, I mean, as, as everyone has said, I mean, we have really three dynamic people that I think would, we would be happy with, I think with any of them. I think any of them could be a good fit for, for Wilmington, based on the interviews, based on the surveys, based on, you know, all the information that we have. You know, they, they all are coming with so much experience. They all, you know, I recognized, you know, that there was this focus on, on culture and they, every single one of them mentioned the importance of school culture and also recognized that school culture as they were walking around all the schools here and, and sort of sensing sort of the, the joy that they, was sort of palpable through the schools. They all, they all mentioned that. They all were really knowledgeable and talked about using data to sort of make decisions. I thought that was a really important, important aspect, I, because my personal opinion is that's, I think, really important in making improvements to schools. I think that all of them had real effective, seemed to have real effective relationships with their unions. You know, we're in contract negotiations with many of them. I think that, you know, it, I was really impressed with the way, you know, a lot of them spoke about, you know, standing meetings with, with unions and such. You know, sort of to, to, to go through, you know, a couple of them, I'll just go sort of in order. Mr. Folgony, one of the things that stood out to me with him was, was his idea of trust and credibility first and sort of how he would develop his relationships. I think that's really, really important. He had a lot of good ideas at, at one point where he was talking about, you know, we're often, we're good at change, but not at improvement. I thought that was a really interesting thing to ask, perspective to have, thinking about how change can sort of, if you're just changing for change's sake, that can really disenfranchise a lot of people. So sort of knowing, you know, when you want to improve or you want to make a difference, right, you, you, you need to be aware of what's gonna, how people are going to respond to that. So I thought that was really important. Dr. Thompson, you know, some of the things that really stood out to me with him is he, he talked about our vision of the graduate. He talked about, you know, he sort of knew information about our own strategic plan. I thought that was really, really important. I think in terms of the MSBA, he talked about how he had to add grade five to the school in Norwood. And I think that's super important too, because that's also bringing in that, like a, almost kind of what we're doing with consolidating. You know, because I know, you know, parents of fifth graders are really concerned about the parents of eighth graders, just as I know that we're going to have families, parents of fifth graders who are wor, you know, parents of, I'm sorry, first graders are worried about, you know, fifth graders. You know? And then Ms. Benenda, she, you know, she, for me, she really kind of spoke, spoke my language with all of her experience. She, you know, she had a really, really deep knowledge across sort of all levels. They all had a deep knowledge, but I was really impressed with, with, with many of her, many of her responses. Like she, she seemed to have just a really deep level of knowledge, again, at every level. And I think her, that's her experience, but also having worked, you know, I think she, I think she mentioned that she started as a, as a para and worked all the way up to superintendent. And I think knowing schools on all of those levels is super, super important. So, so that leaves me, you know, with like, you know, what are we, you know, how, how do we choose between three super qualified people who I think all meet the, all meet the, the, the standard of, of the things that, of the things that we need? So again, it's, I, like, I've, I've really, I've really struggled, struggled, you know, with this. But I think that, I think that Dr. Thompson, I, I just, it seems to me that his experience, and I know other people have said it too, but his experience in Norwood and I think with the MSBA and being sort of the, the, the forward, you know, the face of it, I think that that experience is exactly what we're going to need at this point in the process, you know? So that would be my, that's, that's, that's my thought right now would be for Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Smaha. So I think the benefit of being chair is that I get to go last. I think the downside is that you guys have done such a great job of, of calling out almost everything that I had, 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 had written down to speak to as well. So I will be brief, but I appreciate that all of the candidates brought a lot of similar strengths to the table, right? I checked references and spoke to members of school committees. It's particularly, so, you know, particularly important to us and all of them spoke glowingly about the candidates. So, you know, had good relationships with their committees, worked well with their committees, were, you know, engaging, were approachable. So, you know, it was really refreshing and, and, you know, made me feel like we had a good, a good pool of candidates. Clearly, all of them have leadership skills and experience. They've all been superintendents, they've all run building projects. They've, they all talked about, you know, while different sort of approaches, building relationships, building trust, sort of those, the way they kind of come into the district. And so I appreciated that while they were similar, they were nuanced and, and I could see, you know, the, the benefit to each sort of approach. Going just in order of how they came to us, I thought, as everybody has said, Mr. Folgony talked a lot about special education and I thought his ideas were, you know, really good and, and certainly we've noted, but something that we should, we should consider and look at for our district. Mr. Ragsdale said it, but he, I, I wrote it down, actually in quotes, he said, "taking positive risks," which I thought was excellent. You know, he talks about sort of coaching people and, and this idea of being committed rather than compliant, right? And so you're getting folks to buy into this, to this ideal, this mission and really sort of driving success through that, which I, I really stood out to me. For Dr. Thompson, I appreciate when he talked about his, sort of his entry plan and coming into the district, he also included town leaders in that. And so especially when I think about the MSBA project and working with the town manager and his office and the permanent building committee and those folks that, you know, sort of that holistic approach to it rather than just schools was really insightful. I appreciate, you know, he talked about engagement, finding common ground. I really liked, I don't know if anybody mentioned this before, he talked about his podcast and I know Dr. Brand has had success with Wildcat Corner. And so, you know, that kind of thinking outside the box approach to getting your message and getting the district's message out there really resonated with me. You know, obviously with a new middle school principal and his experience as, as a middle school principal, I think is important. And he mentioned completing a building that was three months ahead of schedule and $10 million under budget, which, you know, all of them, again, have experience with buildings, but there's a, there's a real sort of concrete data point there that I appreciated. And Ms. Ben, Ms. Benenda, just, the, the experience, I think, sort of speaks for itself, but her, her classroom engagement and she talked about being a teacher. engagement and she talked about being a teacher at heart, like, I really sort of appreciate, I think you said that, that she kind of spoke the language of education, which I thought was really strong and in her favor. So, I struggled with this one. I came into it and through, you know, interactions with the candidates, through the interviews, I got to chauffeur one of them to some of our buildings, reading the feedback, talking to folks in the district. I think the way I thought about it was envisioning myself in this room, doing this work, that each one of them in certain instances would be really, really strong. But at the end of it, it came down to, I think, sort of this idea of culture and what we saw with the feedback from the building staff. And so, I think Dr. Thompson is my recommendation as well. With that, Mr. Ragsill?
Now that everyone has spoken and we seem to have an accord, if people are prepared for a motion, I would be ready to offer one.
I would briefly, just to be safe, make sure there's no public comment. If you'd like to make the motion, Mr. Ragsill?
Then, yeah, then I would move that the committee enter into contract negotiations with Dr. David Thompson to become our interim superintendent of schools for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsill. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Golden. Is there any additional discussion?
Thank you all very much for all your time and effort. And as everyone else said, to everyone who, the fact that we had 40 people respond to surveys in that window and the building pieces that y'all have already mentioned, the building leaders and how welcoming they were. And I do want to say that all of them highlighted the joy they saw in our schools, which joy is such a gateway to learning. It was really fantastic to hear people outside, from outside of our district come in and give that type of feedback. It was very heartening.
I appreciate that. Okay. With that, all those in favor of entering into contract negotiations with Dr. Thompson to be interim superintendent? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. So, with that, certainly we'll be in touch with the candidates. I will provide, as long as it's appropriate to do so, depending on where we're at, an update to the committee at our next meeting, which is April 30th. And so, stay tuned for more information. Does anybody have anything else? I have something, but does anybody have?
Well, if you're going to say it, I'm not going to say it.
Okay. So, let's hold off on a motion to adjourn for just a minute.
I actually have a question, a point of information.
Please.
Do we go into like executive session now or no?
There you go. Ask my question. Thanks. Because we won't start negotiating today, so.
Thanks.
Okay. So, I'm going to, I've got a couple of things, additional things to get through, so bear with me. First, I think most folks, certainly the folks in this room know, most folks watching at home know, our upcoming town election is scheduled for Saturday, April 26th. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Wilmington School Committee is not until April 30th. So, this group will not meet again until after the election. So, I would say very quickly that I have made a point not to talk about the election in this room because I'm a candidate for reelection and I don't want to give any sort of unfair advantage. But I will say that if I'm, if I don't get reelected and I'm not back in this room the next time you all meet, that it has been a real joy and pleasure and honor to serve with you all for the last six years and I appreciate everything that everyone has done for our community and for our students, especially Mr. Samaha, who is by choice not running for reelection and not coming back. So, we are going to, he's been generous enough to agree to come back to the meeting on April 30th to be properly celebrated because we didn't think doing this, the end of a three-day marathon of meetings was fair to him. So, Mr. Samaha will be back for that meeting on the 30th to be properly celebrated and appreciated, but I didn't want your last actual meeting to get away from us without A, expressing our gratitude, mine particularly because, you know, we were elected together and so, it's been, it's been a ride. But I also wanted to give you a chance to say anything that you had to.
Well, thank you.
No pressure.
Well, thank you.
You can save it to the third one too, if you want to write it out in more detail.
Well, I'll be sitting up there next to Paul.
Sorry to interrupt, but before you do that, because I want you to go last on this. I do, I'm literally going to interrupt and I apologize for that, but because I'm also a candidate and I may not be at this table on April 30th, I want to take the opportunity now when I am at the table to thank you, Jay, and thank all of you particularly, but Jay, thank you very much. The three years I've served with you have been fantastic. It's been amazing to have your teaching experience and your teaching and parenting lenses on all these topics and I've learned so much and I really appreciate everything you've done for the families and teachers and the community of Wilmington. So, thank you very much and good luck and have fun.
Thank you. That's a good point. You should, you should get the last word tonight, so.
The last word? Well, you know, thank you. I mean, I really, really have valued my time on this committee. It has been, it has been a long, interesting and fun ride. Interesting and fun. You know, I've appreciated the work with all of you. I appreciate the fact that this committee, even though it's gone through a couple different iterations with some people coming and some people going, it's sort of maintained this collegiality and sort of, I think, as a really good example of the work that, you know, the positive work that a school committee can do, because a lot of this is, nobody, nobody really knows what happens, you know? Nobody really knows what we're doing. I mean, the community, now, we know what we're doing. We know what we're doing most of the time. But like, a lot of people might not recognize, you know, exactly what the work is. So, I, you know, I, and so, I appreciate that people have, and Jen said it in the beginning, of how much people sacrifice for this, for the good of the schools. And I just, I want to thank each and every one of you for helping me, for giving me perspectives. I know, I said this before, but there are, there are so many meetings where I was convinced of one thing and then I came in and then I heard from you guys and my mind was, my mind was changed. And I think that's a really important lesson to learn. I think each one of us probably can feel the same way. I mean, even, even coming in here tonight with this vote, like, I wasn't 100% sure and it was really, I'm really glad that I was able to hear from all of you. So, I want to just thank everybody and thank Wilmington and it's been a lot of fun and I appreciate it and I appreciate you all. So, thank you.
Well, the committee will be different next time it's together, but it will be, there'll be a hole where you are, so we'll miss you. Thank you.
This is for Dr. Brand.
Yeah, Dr. Brand, Dr. Brand, have a seat back. So, without any further ado, I don't know, Mr. Samaha, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Dr. McCallie. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jay.